Okay, good afternoon.
Welcome to the Wednesday open public meeting. Public works will just I see we have your agenda. You want to do that one first? Well, okay. I don't know where Jessica is, but. Sure. She'll probably you probably go ahead and get started. She'll join us.
So a green light.
There you go.
Maybe I need her here. Dave Handy Sheriff's Office Commissioners today had asked for a the Sheriff's Office wants to hire a on-call animal control officer. We propose using our existing budget. This will not be a request for additional money. So as you are aware, our we currently have two full-time animal control officers. Who basically cover seven days a week. These folks have had amazing attendance, but now they're getting vacation time accumulated and we anticipate some vacation happening in the future. So we want to we've discovered it's very important for us to have at least coverage throughout the day shift with animal control. They told us they would be busy, but we're very surprised at how busy they've actually been. They've had over 570 calls for service since the inception of the year in January 31. And as you're also aware, these calls can be a simple, you know, run out to a barking dog or it can be a multi-day investigation. So I've been really impressed by the work they've done, how busy they are. And they spent a lot of time working calls, rehoming animals, trying to divert them from the Humane Society Shelter, which we have to pay for. We have a shelter at the jail and they spend a lot of time caring for those animals and basically rehoming them or adopting them out. So we're we have some cost savings in that area and so we propose to use that to hire this on-call person. So we'd like your if you're so inclined to approve us to move forward with that. Or if you have any questions about that.
Yeah, it seems like it makes sense to me. I think it's been working well and.
It's just the two of them right now?
Correct.
Yeah, it just how do you manage the on-call one?
So basically when they go home at night, they carry a phone with them and they receive an hour compensation for, you know, basically make sure they're available. Really at a moment's notice of dispatch should call them to to come out.
So you have them as an FTE and they're.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're talking about the on-call person we're grabbing at. Okay, I was talking about how they currently manage that. So the proposal would be just when our folks have a vacancy or when they're when they're gone. Obviously, there'd be some training up front depending on it might it may even be the challenge to fill this position because you're basically offering somebody zero hours. But we that's something we'd monitor for our budget and there would be some training up front and we would just basically call them in as needed.
So it's not important. I mean, I I think it's a good thing to do. I'm just curious, they would have a base pay and then a pay per hour.
This on-call position would be basically once they're called in and show up on premises, they would be paid. They would not be paid like a standby pay or anything like that.
So if things were really slow, they may not get paid a month?
Correct. Ouch. Okay. So it's basically a non-benefit, non-represented. Position to be available.
You're just hoping to find somebody or when you have vacations or sickness that they can come in and fill that.
Correct, that would be my that's spot. That would be my hope, yes. So whether we can even do that.
Say it may be difficult to find that. We may have to look at other options because I think that service is is proving to be pretty important to the community.
And again, I just want to stress I'm the rest of us are really not not shocked, but just surprised at how busy the animal control has been.
Has that is it consistent from when the other outfit ran animal control?
Yeah, they they were saying that that's where we we hired the two folks from the Humane Society and.
Right, but did they did they have five that that much business before?
Yes. And and some of the cities have also probably decreased what they're what they're doing from what the Humane Society was doing. But we're still, you know, basically we're not dealing with housing or rehoming cats, but just the just the dogs and livestock.
So is the animal control employees part of the union?
No.
I hadn't thought they were because we hadn't talked about any.
They're they're currently exempt employees. They are still covered by civil service rules and last week I went to the Civil Service Commission and they signed off on this.
But others in the office who wanted to be on-call, they work their regular time.
The existing animal control folks?
Sure, no, not the existing, but other people in your office, would they be eligible to to pick this up as a as an overtime opportunity for them? Because they would have to be able to work during the days when vacation time.
Correct, I mean, virtually everyone else is in a bargaining unit. So that would not need to be kind of apples and oranges.
And it's out of existing funds.
Correct. Well, because we've been successful with our diverging, you know, to the shelter at the jail and rehoming animals. So we have it, we still have quite a about 50% roughly in that what we've broken down for our, I guess you could call our lodging fund. And the Humane Society is going to have us some numbers in about a month on what they're thinking their rates are going to be. And we will negotiate that contract for the what we have to pay to take a, you know, dogs in or cats in.
Well, I don't think you have any problem with doing that up up here. And I I always like to point out things that we try and they work and I think that temporary shelter over at the jail is has proven to to work out.
I think it really has. There's been a lot of volunteer volunteer work put into that as well, so there's some cost savings there.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do have one other request.
Okay.
From building and planning. Requesting to fill the Planning Division Manager. The employee put in his notice today.
And who's that?
Wayne's leaving.
He is?
He's going to Chilton.
He's going to Chilton. Where's who could ask the sheriff to take care of that?
So I really would like to fill the position as soon as possible.
That's because our other planner that went to Chilton is now at the City of Longview.
Oh, that's right. Nick went to City of Longview. So Chilton had an opening.
Yes. I've said no. We can't compete with private, unfortunately.
You gotta eat well.
No, we'll go outside and see what we can recruit. Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Yes. Thank you. Soon is better, the sooner the better. So perfect. Thank you. Thank.
Just when you get the department working on all cylinders and this happens, huh?
Yeah. Wow. It happens in private enterprise too. You get something going well and then somebody.
So now we get good news, right?
Yes.
I heard Susan laugh, so I'm, I'm doubting that we're going.
Good afternoon. Commissioners Mike Moss, Public Services Director. First item on our agenda today is the Port of Longview Tenant Way Possession and Use Agreement. You don't have that in front of you because I'm going to email to you later today along with some bullet points. It's a six-page document that our outside council has been working on with the Port of Longview for the purchase of the county's nine acres that we're selling to the port for the rail expansion for the Port of Longview. It's the first document that you'll see that will have some numbers attached to it, some dates in there. That's like, that's why I said I'll send it to you so you can review it for next week's approval. There'll be a final document coming down the road with exhibits, maps, all that fun stuff. But this is actually for them to be able to take possession early of that land. So they can start doing some of their pre-construction work out there. The number that's in there is like 2.8 million, but it's a stale appraisal because it's fairly old since we've been working on this for quite a while with the Port of Longview. So there'll be a new appraisal before the final documents are sent out. So I'll get that to you later this afternoon and hopefully have a discussion either Monday at one of your meetings in the morning or we can do our Tuesday 1:30 afternoon since our Wednesday next week has been moved forward to the Tuesday. So that will give you some time to review, ask any questions, but it's a fairly small contract to read, so.
So the, the, the closure restrictions for the rest of the landfill won't affect this strip of land, will it? I know we were moving the, 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 the wellheads and the monitoring devices and that's, that's the only thing through closure that's.
Yep. We relocated anything that was on that parcel, that section of land we're talking about onto the actual footprint of the landfill.
And it has the building or the shelter or the, the covering.
Yeah. So it does have the building you can see from Tenant Way there. We have put a mobile building on site to store any documents that are required to be onsite there.
There'll be a second, separate agreement for the relocation that we're working on, the relocation of the wells, but also relocation of those documents. So the actual relocation of the wells started this morning, but they started drilling the new wells at 7:30 AM. So that's the first step for us to move our stuff out of this parcel that we're selling to the Port of Longview.
So, so you mentioned a location for the documents to be stored has to be onsite. That'll be off of this strip or are we gonna, it's got to be off the strip.
Yeah. So it's off the strip. It has to be, those documents have to be maintained onsite for any inspection purposes. So we've got a container with a roll-up door that we can store that stuff on there and some.
It's clan like where all the documents were on the older Dakovichville site that was in closure, right? Let's not, let's not talk about that. All right. And oh, the, the other question that I had was once the new appraisal comes in, what happens to that money? Does it, does it go for employee appreciation activities up at the new landfill or?
After.
I'm not, I, I don't know what the policy is when we, when we sell property like that.
Yeah. So for land that was encumbered under the closed landfill, I'm talking with council on this. It would stay with the post-closure of the landfill until that's completed. And then at that point in time, it could be removed.
And that closure has 20 more years?
20 more years on the initial closure. We can review after that with ecology and see what the current status is.
So that's if I come back for another 12 years, I might get in on that. Yeah. Fat chance of that happening.
You know, I'm assuming all those funds get put into investment? And your earnings on investment, does that stay in the fund too? Or does that go to the general fund?
It does stay within the fund itself. All funds connected with the post-closure process stay with the post-closure process.
Minus the service charges to the investors, investment companies.
And it almost keeps up with inflation.
Almost, almost.
So what's, I tried to find it, but I couldn't. So you're presenting something to us on Tuesday or?
No, I'm going to give you the document later today and we'll have discussions in person Monday or Tuesday. Tuesday, we have our 1:30 with you guys. It's usually a one, Wednesday at 1:30. So it's not on the agenda yet. We're hoping to have discussions, have maybe permission for the chairman to sign and then put it on the next week's agenda after that.
I'm gone the next.
Back when he's, back when he's back.
But, but you guys.
The designated sign. I think it needs to be signed. They're hoping to get it signed by the end of August, but it depends on discussions next week. We just received this document recently.
Would you go again then? So, so you won't be here tomorrow?
No.
Onward?
Right. But if you guys want to take care of it, I think you've been working on it long enough. You all understand what it's doing.
I just want to make sure we don't have any sensitivity there.
I don't have any sensitivity to it.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Thanks for clarifying. We're hoping to have better news on the second one. Before, right before we came to this meeting, we reached out to the Port of Longview a few weeks ago, but they called me back today. And the port declined having the recycling center located at Willow Grove Park. We're hoping that'd be a perfect location because they do have a camp host in place where, you know, most of our illegal dumping at our old recycling center in West Longview happened after hours. With a camp host, they'd be able, now they opened, was it sunrise to sunset there? So it'd be helpful on having less illegal dumping. They declined having it at their location. So back to the drawing board, it's probably my guess back to where we originally thought would be our West Longview Road Shop. We started doing some prep work out there in the past, but we were looking for maybe a better location. But most of the business owners, churches we've discussed out this, this project with out there have declined at having it on their property.
So when I drive through North Kelso on the way to the freeway and go by Huntington, they have the recycling bins there. Is Robert Gray an option?
That or Mount Solo?
Or Mount Solo.
Yeah, those are two options that we'll be looking at here along with our West Longview shop. Yeah.
Oh, Robert Gray is actually unincorporated. So that's, you don't have to worry about Longview interference.
Correct.
The middle school is in Longview, so.
And that's been.
You might talk to Ian Thompson to see if the school gardens can have another division to oversee the recycling center. He's, he's the coordinator for the, for all of the community or school gardens, but you know.
Okay, thank you.
Just, just an idea to contemplate on that.
Yeah.
Let me just ask you a frank question.
Yeah.
Here, because we've heard waste control or waste connections, whatever they call themselves, they don't really take, we don't have an outlet for recycling anymore. They don't, they don't run it down.
Certain products go to recycling. Certain products are challenging to find homes for, yes.
Yeah. And so most of it ends up, it'll end up in our landfill where it doesn't, doesn't go where people think it goes. So is it really worth all the effort?
So for paper products, metal cans of those things, you know, metal drink containers, things of that nature, there is a strong recycling market for those. For our glass and plastics, there's less of a market for that material. If that helps at all.
So, but pursuing the question, have you looked at the economics of that? It's certainly with glass, my, my impression is it's not economical. And the plastics, we've already discussed that.
Yeah.
But even the aluminum cans I've, I've hear on and off, it's worth it or not worth it because there is time and effort involved for you to do all this. And then someone's got to clean it and sort it and that kind of thing.
Mr. Morton's asking it better and I did, I just, are, are you spending more time than it's worth on it? Yeah.
Or is Waste Control spending more time?
The public gets, they get excited about this stuff, but.
Correct. Yeah, we get questions quite often as a staff of where does the plastics go? And we know where a lot of it goes, which is back to landfills at this point.
So, so Waste Control empties the bins. We don't empty, and county employees do not handle it. It's, it's completely up to.
With the contract that we have with Waste Control.
And they take the stuff from, do you have one up in the Toodle area?
They have, how many drop boxes?
Eight, eight.
Eight, eight centers around the county?
We did have eight sites.
Yeah, now seven. Yeah.
So what happens from your view if we had no recycling in the county? Are we? Uh, yeah.
So from a contract point of view, our contract with Waste Control, we pay them a fixed fee per ton to operate and handle the waste at, or the recycling at those sites.
So if there are no tons, then it's no.
Once the material's in the bins, it is the property and control of Waste Control at that point. We don't have any control on that side.
Well, we don't pay them if the bins are empty.
We pay a fixed fee per ton that enters the transfer station.
So there's no, oh.
So if there's nothing in the bins, we're still paying the same amount.
So the more they divert, the less they send to you. Otherwise it's the set fee that we pay them for, for the tons that they haul because they can't find a market for it.
Is that right? That didn't sound right.
No. So it's a fee structure for material halted into the transfer station as a total. So the amount of material being hauled from the recycles does not affect what we pay. It's on the amount of garbage going into the transfer station. I think it's a around 60 cents a ton.
Right. The, all the garbage that goes through the transfer station that doesn't come from recycling has a fee associated with it.
That's correct.
The stuff that goes to the recycling today, if we had no recycling, that would be added on to the, to the tonnage and the fee would then be applied to.
No. There's no additional charge. It's just the total value going into the transfer station.
Right. But in, but we don't pay for the tonnage that, that we, if it goes into the recycling bins, that's 100 pounds and we've got 1,000 pounds elsewhere. You're paying the fee on the 1,000 pounds or on the 1,000 plus the 100?
We're paying the fee on the 1,000 pounds.
Right. So if we don't have those bins, then that 100 pounds is going to go in here. So now we're paying the fee on 1,100.
Okay.
That's true.
Yeah.
Okay. So the trick now is to put those recycling bins all over the place and shift all the tonnage there.
Yeah. Maybe we want illegal dumping. Sorry.
They take care of the. As long as we have enough garbage coming in to pay the rest of the bills, right?
Correct.
But all the legal stuff that, isn't that why we ended up closing that one? Because of the other, not to recycle stuff, but the other stuff.
Yeah, it was really true MSW garbage getting dumped there, not recycling.
Covering the cost of cleaning that up.
Actually, most of that was covered with Waste Control employees. Yeah, yeah. We went out there a few times, but for the most part it was their staff that was cleaning that up. Yeah. And most of the centers we have are fairly clean sites at this time. We've chip sealed, put better lighting up at most of the sites. It's just the West Longview one that was causing us issues.
All right.
Of 100% of the waste that goes to our landfill, what part goes through the transfer station here?
An eighth?
Yeah, seventh, eighth. So 800,000 tons and 140,000 go through the transfer station here?
Yeah. So it would, it wouldn't have a huge impact.
All right. Sorry about the rabbit hole.
More great news, the gas energy update. You know, we gave you update about a month ago that was on pause. We got word back from the PUD last week that's permanently on pause still till probably next year they'll reevaluate. They reached out to the governor's office and a few other sources in Olympia to figure out if there's ways to move forward with their issues with that one department. And it sounds like it's on a hold till maybe first of the year, maybe after your elections. There's supposed to be a press release coming out, combined press release from our department. And PUD here in the next week or two, we haven't seen a draft yet, but they usually start that draft and get it our way. But it'll go out to the press here shortly about being on pause.
This is one of those frustrating things because you, the, they're basically telling us, no, keep burning it off. Don't power 4,000 homes with it.
Correct. Very frustrating.
Zero cents to me.
Yeah. Especially at two departments or two agencies working together on this. I believe it's a legacy project for the county. You know, 40, 45 million dollar project with two agencies working together hand in hand and have a, go to the wayside because of a state agency. Very disappointing.
Now, the, the reason they is ecology wants better scrubbing. Now, does that the gas in the original plan get scrubbed enough, gets fed into the engines? And was there a downside? In other words, what's the gain of the extra scrubbers?
Yeah, I, I, I can't give you the, I probably give that to the PUD.
Your suspicion, it doesn't really, I mean, you wouldn't have planned to go ahead if, if that, that was a problem.
Correct. Yes. And that, our next.
Somebody come up with a great idea.
Yeah, yeah. To us, unfortunately, if it doesn't work with this gas energy, it's going to be, we're going to have to scrub it down the road when we get better volumes and interject it and directly in the natural gas line. I mean, that's, that's going to be.
For that, you will need the, the good scrubbers.
Exactly. Yep. Because if, you know, if it doesn't work out from all the work that they've done and money put towards this and if ecology is standing in the way. I don't think any other third party is going to come in and have any different success than the PUD did. Which means we're going to have to wait till we have better volumes to go maybe that next step, which we're hoping to do down the road. But it may be phase one instead of phase four. Yeah, we're, our staff's pretty disappointed. I know PUD is really disappointed. They put a lot, a lot of money towards this project.
The, the whole county should be disappointed. I mean, people that live here should be disappointed.
How much are we putting out now in CFM?
12, 1300.
Oh, really? We're really gone up then.
We're starting to do some vertical wells and that will help our, show help our volumes.
Yeah, we just had a meeting with our gas engineers today to go over the new overall plan and get that hammered out so we can start looking at a vertical infrastructure onset hopefully next year.
That's like a 50% increase over the past five years at least.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Staff's been working hard up there.
Well, we've, we've intentionally brought in.
Correct.
Futrescence.
Yeah, exactly right.
But it's, it's not just for, I mean, the gas is a byproduct. We want the airspace.
Yeah. It helps out in many right ways. Yes.
I, I, I'm, I know the PUD has expressed displeasure probably to our, our reps and our senators and stuff. I'm, I'm wondering if the commission, the commissioner should draft a letter, our disappointment in that kind of decision also.
Yeah. I believe they also reached out directly to the governor's office and had some conversations.
Maybe we'll work on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe Susan has.
I would think that a, a letter is not at all sufficient. There needs to be face-to-face conversation with.
Well, I've talked to Senator Wilson face-to-face. I haven't talked to the other two.
Yeah.
But yeah.
It's not in his district, but yeah, it's, you need all six of them actively involved strategizing how to, how to resolve this irritating decision.
Or we just draw a picture, send it to DOE and go about our business.
Maybe Susan has better news than I have on the next item.
All six of our people need to be involved.
Yeah.
Good afternoon. I think I have better news. I have several easements and.
And who are you?
I'm the good fellow today. No, I'm Susan Eugenius County Engineer. So I have three temporary easements and two permanent easements for the Allender Road Bridge Project. three temporary easements and two permanent easements for the Allender Road Bridge Project. This is a bridge replacement up at Riderwood at the end of the road. This is a federally funded project. I brought them here today. The both property owners have fully signed these, asking for permission for the chairman to sign these.
He's got it as far as I'm concerned.
Ooh, of course.
Thank you.
We'll move over to facilities. Savannah's here to give us an update on the investment grade audit.
Hello, Commissioner Savannah Clement, Public Services. So a couple of weeks ago, I came to the board a couple of different times and we went over the investment grade audit that Milig was presenting. And we have started with that process. They were actually onsite yesterday and this morning with their electrical team, walking the building and getting some information. What I have though is a document that does require a signature. And this can be a signature from the chair of the board or the chair, or the board could delegate Mike Moss to sign this. But what it is, is a notice to proceed on this, gosh, investment grade audit. I keep wanting to say IGA, on the IGA. If the board recalls, we won't have to pay for this. It will get rolled into the construction contract if we decide to move forward. So it's not a contract per se, it's truly a notice to proceed. But it has a single signature because it's all routed through the state. So again, it's up to the board if the chair would like to sign. I can email it for review or I can put it and then put it on consent. Or you could delegate Mike Moss to sign it. It, it's completely up to the board. Okay, you will see the final go through consent either way. So, and I can email it later this afternoon.
So you're on the hook, Mike.
He wanted me to really push the board's signature. But I think that's, that's on track. I'm excited.
Well, if he does, if we do that, then he just has to wait until vacation time's over, right?
Yes, true.
HOJ, been working a little bit more still on the remediation efforts there. Recently, we finished cleaning the penthouse, which they refer to as on the fourth floor or actually the rooftop. We had a space that was covered that housed the HVAC equipment that's no longer in use for jail. Had a lot of old equipment, just kind of a storage unit for old stuff for the last thirty years. Went in there with a third party cleaned it, got all the dirt out, any droppings. And actually, it looks really, really good now. At a certain point, we'll probably take all the duck work out of there since we're not going to use that anymore. It's, it's a vast area of just nothing, but you can't really walk through. It's a maze of duck work, so. We're also doing duck cleaning for the HVAC system. We started last night. It goes from five in the evening till two in the morning, like the next nine, nine evenings. So we have staff working a little overtime, working with that crew to work out, clean out the ducks, duck work. And we're also replacing carpet in jury room number three this Saturday. So a few of the items inside there. I thought I'd just fastback a couple more items on that.
Yeah, so one thing we're pursuing too, if the board recalls, it was that north stairwell that was really causing us those problems. So we are awaiting a scope of work to move forward to get a contractor in there to essentially fix that dampness problem that we're having. The remediation efforts also include adding upgraded lighting. It has nothing to do necessarily with air quality, but since we're in there, it will have an energy savings. We're going to be encapsulating the walls, I said that correctly, with a product that's specialized for concrete ceiling. And then also we hope to add some vents or some ventilation airflow within that, depending on how the scope of work turns out from our envelope specialist.
We decided to make some improvements to that north stairwell due to the fact that we had no idea how many staff members actually use that stairwell. But since a lot of this employees park in the north parking lot and use that instead of going through the front entrance, we decided to make some improvements with the lighting, airflow, painting and what, after we get fixed from the water.
Yeah, especially since it was the one causing the problem.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, and talking about north stairwell, we'll talk about it next week or north parking lot. It's on the agenda next Tuesday for us to grind and repave the north parking lot. So that'll be done in the month of September.
So as you do the duct cleaning, that stirs up an awful lot of dust. How do you protect it from getting sucked into the office space?
That's a great question. So essentially, the team that's performing the ductwork cleaning is, is using kind of like the same method contractors use to seal off areas. But that's not to say that it's foolproof in, in that it's a hundred percent effective in keeping that dust down. We don't have, you know, necessarily record of the last time that the ducks were cleaned. So it's, we have had some particles come through into some offices and we're trying to remediate that and make sure that we're walking through as much as we can prior to business opening to address that if it's there. But yeah, great point.
Yeah, they have a six member team. There's two members that go and, and use plastic to kind of block things off. Two member team cleaning the duct in that area and a team behind it that's taking down the plastic and trying to clean up anything that's left behind. But, you know, they're doing a lot of area as a large building, so they're moving along fairly quickly in an eight or nine day period. So I'm, I know from hearing a few responses this morning that a few things are getting, a few dust particles are being left behind, which is going to happen when you clean ducks that may have not been cleaned in fifty years, forty years. I don't know when the last time, if ever. And there's really no good time to do it other than evenings. I mean, it's just unfortunate.
Yeah.
At least there's not a jail at trying to operate at the same time.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, and the next item I have is a Department of Commerce Clean Buildings Performance. I'll call it initiative, but it's a mandate. Essentially, county buildings are required to meet certain energy compliance standards, which is date driven and square footage driven by timeframe, which is twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight and so forth. The first step in meeting this energy mandate is providing building inventory to the state to determine which tier we fall under. For example, tier one, I think it's fifty thousand to, to, to two hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty thousand square feet. We don't, I think the Hall of Justice is our only building that's going to fall under that. Thankfully, we're doing this investment grade audit that is going to comply with the next step, which is an energy audit inventory. And then we move forward with operation manuals, which we'll have. So we're actually, which never happens, right? We're actually on track to meet that because of the current situation with Milig and our energy upgrades at the Hall of Justice. So that is our major tier one building. We do not believe we have any other tier one buildings with, except the hall. But moving forward, we will have to do the same thing with our other buildings like admin, annex, jail, et cetera. One thing I'm working on, trying to take advantage of is they're providing grant funding up to fifty cents per square foot to provide funding for these energy audits. So we met yesterday, Sean, myself and Lauren with Milig, with the Department of Commerce representative about securing this, this funding. So we're working on that now and there is a chance that we could have quite a large portion of our two hundred and forty-eight thousand IGA paid for by this grant if we're awarded or at least a portion of it. Then I'm also looking, working with Milig and Sean, of course, looking at other grant funding they have available for HVAC capital improvements, which this is exactly that. So I'm hopeful that there's some additional funding out there that we can, that we can utilize. I'll have more information though, moving forward on, on the requirements for that clean building performance standard. Maybe not for two of you.
So how is the department, how has the department move gone?
For.
You guys are out at your, at, at your headquarters now, building plan or facilities maintenance? Or are they still across the way?
No, they're over at our location. Yeah, our project coordinators have been there, yeah. We have had a project coordinator over at Annex actually inventorying really old plans. We're trying to scan them in. That's something we're encountering that there's not a lot of great record keeping on the plan side of it, at least digitally. So we're collecting, trying to move out of there. We actually just met with the OPD team this morning at eleven. We went ahead and toured one more time and so we're going to be putting together our game plan to move them into that location. So that part's going well. Yeah.
You plan to have it moved in by the end of December?
I plan on having a phase to move in. Hopefully by the end of December, we're actually working on kind of some Plan B, plans for at least one division because they require floor to ceiling walls for confidentiality purposes, which will require additional ANE, you know, and construction and permitting. So that's the one office that we're looking to potentially move into another just satellite location, short term, until we can get that office. So my hope is still by the end of December, we're shooting for that target. That's going to be our biggest hurdle though, is, is that one office that requires the actual walls.
And that one division, that one division would probably, we, we wouldn't be leasing space. We're looking at other county owned structures.
Yeah.
So not having extra lease space, but because they need to use office space for around twenty employees. And I think phase one, we can get easily fourteen or so, what we have there now without having to build walls. But that, that second phase might be a little more challenging. It may not get done till first quarter of twenty twenty-five. So, you know, we may have to find a home for four or five people for a short term.
Yeah.
So you're, you're looking at first floor in this building? Behind the rolling, the rolling wall of the old, old planning, building and planning office?
That's one option. The other option, we're looking at some space in the love overwhelming building. There's some empty space there also.
There are actual offices that, that they require just in the short, short term.
WSHU Extension Office.
Correct.
Yes, you're correct.
I should probably stop calling.
Some terms we try to avoid even mentioning.
Yeah.
I won't call it LO anymore, I apologize.
That's all we have.
Completely off the wall question. Several years ago, we saw an impressive demonstration of a portable, portable power plant that we bought for like a hundred and twenty K.
Correct.
Have we used it? Where is it?
We've used it for, for like regular generator purposes in the Klammer shop. That's, that's their backup generator there.
That's where it is.
But it's not really gone to a site like we might, I feel we might purpose it for like when DEM may need it for off campus or something where it needs to be quietly ran in the evening time for like a camp. But we've only used it for our regular general generator purposes when we lose power in the Klammer area. As, as, we also hardwired it in, so it's, it's automatic, comes on at the Klammer shop.
It's hardwired into the shop?
Or plug, be able to plug it in, yeah.
Yeah, it's plugged.
Plugged in, yeah.
Yeah.
Not hardwired, sorry.
Part of the rationale for that was we never know where some emergency might actually hit.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, and has it turned out to be as useful as we thought or interesting?
Interesting is probably the right term. Probably overkill for what we need at that particular shop because you could probably just use a regular generator. That's why I was hoping, you know, not hoping, it's, it's available if a department or DEM or one of the fire districts may need it offsite for no more of a long term. Like I said, a camp site where it could be ran at nighttime, where it has enough capacity and not make noise. It'd always be running as a generator, generator, but running off the battery side of it. So we have not used that side of it. So. It's available and DEM knows it's available.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any miscellaneous gentleman? What's your, what's your, your, your schedule like? You'll, you'll, you'll be here all of next week?
No, we're, we, we're scheduled to leave on Thursday. And then we'll be gone the following week.
Okay, so you'll be gone all, up to including the Labor Day weekend?
Correct, correct. And I understand you're going to be finishing up the the ballot, the, the ballot counting, the, the recount next week.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Some days it, I can hear clearly and others.
Well, sometimes my voice is very hard to hear.
Well, I'm so used to the coughing now that I.
I don't know how many of us plan on, WASAC is having their deal in Vancouver this year. We've talked about. How many of us we plan on? I probably will, will go and I won't stay down there, but I'll probably take a trip down or you plan to?
No, you probably, I, I, no.
Okay, so.
Two of us need.
Then we just need to recognize that we'll, we're okay with the registration fee.
Last day to get the cheaper rate.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But just this time, next year, we're not likely to approve it.
You, you'll probably be.
You won't, huh? Actually, that new commission next year needs to go. They'll be in their novice stage.
Yeah.
And that stage lasts how many months, Rick?
It takes a while.
Still does, yeah, yeah, it does. It's amazing.
Okay. So as long as you're talking WASAC, is there any development? The structure is changing, not changing?
Uh, the only development I've seen lately is one of the, the lobbyists who, I think she does a good job, Juliana Roll, is taking a position with one of the telecoms? Is that right?
Yeah.
So they'll, they'll probably be looking for a replacement there. But other than that, I haven't heard anything. I haven't heard any further development on King and Pierce and some of the, the big counties and their, what they want to do.
Yeah, I, I think it's interesting, the interim director that replaced Eric was a Pierce County council member, very active in the association. So maybe, maybe that tried to help keep Pierce County in.
Yeah. Okay, we have a few minutes. Want to just recess till two thirty? Okay.
Okay. So I don't know if you want to use the side one where we have two microphones. You want to do that? Sure. Thank you. Is the green light on?
Can you hear me okay?
There, there you go.
Okay. So I can give you a minute to glance over what I just handed out, but we're here to give just kind of a recap of how things have been going with our program the last six months. So you have an emailed copy in your inboxes and I can just take a few minutes and kind of go over what we've been up to, if that's okay?
Sure.
And then just ask questions along the way, if that's okay?
Okay.
So for the record, my name is Laura Height. I'm the, oh, thank you for putting that up on the screen. That's so nice. I'm the executive director of the Community Mediation Center and we have a two-year, I believe it's just called a pass-through contract with the county. So we're, we're about midway through that two-year contract where we're receiving some funds to help with this particular program. So I'll go over what we've been doing with that money and in that time. We were here about six months ago, so some of this may be old news, but I just wanted to give a recap on what the program is and what we're doing. So the Housing Stability Program works with landlords and property management companies and their tenants to resolve issues of unpaid rent with the goal of improving communication between the parties and reducing the instances of unlawful detainers being filed with the court. So that's the, the gist of the program. Who does it help? Anyone in Calhoun County who is at risk of losing permanent housing due to lack of payment or lease agreement violations and the property management individual or company. We are a neutral third party, so we do not represent either side in this. But we try and help them communicate and resolve their issues on their own. And then how does it help? The Mediation Center provides conflict coaching, referrals to additional local resources and screening for lower Columbia cap rental assistance funds. We also provide conciliation services and repayment plan assistance.
The source of our money for, to you, does that come from the document recording fees or is it another housing program?
So that's a good question. We do have two contracts through the county and to be specific, this program and the funds associated with it are through the Consolidated Homelessness Grant. I believe it overall was maybe a couple million dollars. I think CAP got a large portion of that to help with housing funds. And we get a, it's a $63,000 per year contract to help with these services. So it is separate from the document recording fee contract that we have with you.
Thank you.
Next slide, unless there's any other questions? Just to give you a recap of, here's how many people we're talking about. So in the last six months since we saw you last, these are the number of individual households that we have helped. As you can see, the majority of those are January and February. That's almost 50% of what we've done in the last six months. It's a very challenging financial time for a lot of people after the holidays. And then March, April, May and June had, you know, between 35 and 40 cases each month. And then how those are broken down. So when those people come into our office or, or we get contacted by phone or email, how, how do we help them? What kind of services are we talking about? As you can see, the vast majority of the cases that we work with are that blue bar on the next page. That's conflict coaching and I'm going to go in depth about what that means, but just so you can kind of see what services we're talking about. The second most is a referral and I'll go in more depth about what that means. And then conciliation and mediation. Those are very similar. So conciliation, when we refer to it, we are interacting with both the landlord and property management company and the tenant. So if you think of a triangle where if they're not able to talk or not willing to talk to each other, at that point, conciliation is when we're talking to one party and then communicating that information to the other. Sometimes we are talking about a repayment plan, you know, what a tenant can afford, what a landlord will accept, that type of communication. A repayment plan, move out plan, those types of things. So, and then mediation is where they actually will physically come into the office or participate on a real-time Zoom meeting and will sit down with mediators and have kind of that conciliated conversation condensed into a couple of hours and have, it's usually the same type of information, but it's just in a, a meeting like we'd be sitting here talking.
So of these 286 or, or the, the six months, is that, is it fair to say the majority of that is tenants that find you and say they're having issues?
It is. I, don't quote me on any percentages. It is majority tenants that are, are contacted through our office and they'll come to us and say, you know, we're having trouble paying rent. We're in a tight spot. But we do have some good relationships with both individual landlords and property management companies. And a lot of times they'll reach out now that we're kind of known in the community on their tenant's behalf and say, I have a tenant that's struggling, you know, can you reach out and contact them? And we do that as well.
So how do, how do the tenants find out about you?
We do a lot of outreach in the last couple of years. We just came from a community resource fair over at Youth and Family Link. We're out a lot. Just physically going to places, we'll set up a table, we'll have our brochures and our information and we talk to people that way. We have a website and then through the ERP program, which was the, it's a sunsetted program now, but a couple of years ago, it was the eviction resolution pilot program. We were able to establish a lot of relationships with individual landlords during that time. And since this is a similar continuation of services, a lot of times people know us from that previous program and will say, hey, are you still doing that program? And we'll say, no, we're not doing that, but we are doing something similar. How, how can we help you? So it's a lot of word of mouth. And then just being out in the community and talking to people.
I imagine that the individual property owners are pretty happy to have your help.
I hope so.
Is that true of the property management folks also? I would tend to think they're a bit more high-handed.
The great news about, you know, companies as they grow is they can internalize a lot of these processes. They'll have their own human resource department. They'll have their own sort of internal mediation systems and processes that they use. So once a property company gets large enough, they sometimes find that they do not need our services and they'd rather deal with it in-house. So they would use their proprietary resolution services.
Big distinction though is you're neutral and they're not.
Yes, could you say that louder into the microphone? Yes, that, that is a huge bonus. And at this point, the beautiful thing about being able to receive some funds from the county is we provide all of these services completely free to land. to landlords and tenants, which is something that even if you are using your own organization, you're paying your own staff to do that. And we, for the next year, are able to offer these with no charge to both parties. All right, let's switch on. So I wanted to talk a little bit more about what conflict coaching is. As you can see, that is out of the 247 cases in the last six months, 155 of those fall in that conflict coaching range. So what do we mean by that and what are we doing? So when folks contact us, and I'm just going to use the example of, let's say, a tenant has contacted us because that is the most common case, we listen to what's going on and we hear their story. Most likely, you know, they have a complicated backstory. They have more than one issue in their life. You know, not being able to pay their rent might not be the only thing. So we listen to kind of what their 360 circumstances and we see, first of all, is this a case that we think we can help them with? Sometimes we'll refer them right out and say, it sounds like you need specific legal help that we can't give you and we may turn that into a referral. But we listen to the unique situation and challenges of each client because each one is a completely unique snowflake of a situation. We find out if they're in a domestic violence situation. A lot of folks are waiting for social security benefits or they're, they're waiting for benefits from a job. And we talk to them about timelines there. They're unable to find full-time work and we try and figure out kind of what are the parameters that we're working with and what assistance we may be able to direct them toward. We also ask tough questions about taking practical actions. So if they're not currently working or not working full-time, is there a reason why? Why not? Do they need a second job? Did they have a roommate that moved out? Do they need a new roommate? Asking some of those questions to find out in, you know, the black and white situation of, yes, I know this is maybe in an emotional time, but realistically, you know, are there practical solutions that are in front of you that you can take? Is there flexibility in their budgets to prioritize paying rent over other things? Sometimes people just kind of need to talk that through with somebody to find out maybe they do have the money to make a repayment plan, so we can, we can work with them on that. And then providing communication strategies to individuals in conflict. A lot of times I struggle for a percentage overwhelmingly, this is a communication issue as much as it is a financial issue. So a lot of times tenants are nervous to talk to their landlords or property managers, especially if they're renting from a friend or a family member or someone, they've been a really good tenant for a long time. Things have kind of gone south. They're unsure of how to approach the situation. So we can provide them with some coaching on how to start that conversation with their property manager or landlord. If they feel comfortable reaching out, you know, we can help them with that. If they do not feel comfortable talking to their landlords or property managers, do they have a support person or someone who could come alongside and help them have those conversations? Because ultimately, we want the two parties that are at odds to be able to speak to each other. That's the end goal. And then encouraging alternate plans if their current ideas are not working. A lot of times people have said, you know, here are all the things I've tried and they're just not working. Have they considered getting a second job, looking for a roommate? Or like I said, just moving to a place that's more affordable. Sometimes people find themselves stuck in a living situation that's just untenable and they, they can't afford the rent for a variety of reasons. And moving, it's always expensive. It's always daunting, but helping them break that down into smaller steps, you know, if you were to move, where would you want to move? You know, where do you work? How can you get closer to work? Things like that. So it's a lot of conversation, a lot of talking like I just did, and it's a lot of listening to find out what they have already tried, what hasn't worked and how we can help them continue on under their own power before going to financial aid or something along those lines. Questions?
Yeah, I've got, it's an ancillary question. It has not so much to do with which, what you do, but with what you learn from your clients.
Okay.
I am puzzled oftentimes when I see that people don't get a roommate when that used to be what everybody did, you know? Do you have any insight as to the hesitancy for people to get a roommate and be more economical?
Oh, man. Like I said, each situation is so different. Everybody has a good reason why a roommate isn't going to work for them, whether it's their personal space, whether it's their allergies, whether it's their dog that doesn't like other people. If people don't want to get a roommate, they will come up with a reason why it's not going to work for them. So I, there's a lot of reasons why people don't choose that option.
Yeah, it sounds, it sounds true. Do they, do they then expect somehow that someone else will make them whole in a manner to which they should, they think they, they, they should be accustomed to or however that goes?
Meaning are they expecting assistance financially so they can continue to live in their preferred environment?
Yes.
Okay. Sometimes, sometimes. And that is some of the conflict coaching and the reality checking that we can do with people and a beautiful part of why we're neutral. We don't know the people that come and talk to us and we're able to ask some pointed and very specific questions. Sometimes repeating back to folks what we've heard them just say can be very clarifying. Sometimes this is the first conversation that people have had with another person who's not their best friend or their spouse or their family. And talking it over with someone who is neutral can sometimes help people get a lot of clarity as to, you know, as I'm talking through this, it doesn't really sound like a viable situation. So that's the best case scenario is giving people a place to put everything that they've tried out on the table and realize that maybe they do need to take another option. Sometimes people aren't ready. They're not ready to change their preferences.
And this similar question, when I see job postings all over the place, but what's the problem with people that say they cannot find full-time work?
I hate to keep saying this, there's, there's no, you know, bulk answer for that. Sometimes what I would say is full-time work in a job posting does not always equal full-time paycheck. And I'm not trying to single out any employers. Sometimes jobs are posted as full-time. Once you get trained and hired, those hours can drastically reduce to part-time. And that is a theme that we have heard is, I don't know if that's just how companies are doing it, or if that's a reflection on the performance of the employee. I couldn't tell you. Sometimes people are brought in with the, the promise, I hate to say that, of a full-time position that does not end up that way. And what they end up with is a part-time job, that then going out and needing to find a supplement, supplemental part-time job. Now they have two work schedules that they're trying to get to not conflict with each other in addition to their personal lives and children, and that can be very challenging. So sometimes it's just they have too many irons in the fire, too many work schedules and they can't balance them all.
Good, thank you.
Marsha, anytime you want to add anything, jump right in.
You're doing such a fine job.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and switch to the next one. What is a referral? So the last six months, we've done 79 specific referrals. This is a wide variety. So employment, like you just talked about. We refer people specifically to WorkSource, Goodwill, Employers Overload, et cetera. There have been recently several job fairs locally. We've had flyers up in our offices. We refer people there to look for work. Legal resources, we are not a legal organization. We do not provide legal assistance. So resources locally such as Kalispakia Come Legal Aid, Northwest Justice Project, and then local landlord and tenant attorneys. There is a statewide landlord legal representation. We do refer people there as well.
This is a topic that I do feel comfortable sharing because with all of the involvement we have in the community as far as tabling events or any kind of a, something special in the community, we usually have a table there with our resources and we go around and we talk to other agencies and nonprofits to find out exactly what their services are to become more educated so that we go back to the office, share it with office staff and say, if you've got a tenant or a client and there's nothing we can do to help them, you can refer them to these other agencies. So we're very familiar with all of those that are listed up there because we've specifically talked to the staff and the directors in their programs and we always appreciate sharing back and forth information so that we can network in the community.
Basic services like showers, laundry, transportation available to residents of Calhoun County. There are some providers and organizations that target specific groups for aid such as veterans, seniors, families with young children, et cetera. Language services, this is, this is a big one. For interpretation, we contact folks from the Ethnic Support Council. I know they're not the only place that does interpretation. But that, that's something that sometimes there's just a language barrier. Folks have received eviction paperwork that is not in their native language and they need to figure out what, what to do next. And navigating folks to the right resource is a big step in the right direction. Utilities, assistance from local churches or the Salvation Army specifically from, or for payment of utilities. Then financial help for immediate relief to prevent eviction and maintain current housing and that specifically is from lower Columbia cap. That's the majority of the Consolidated Homelessness Grant. I believe the majority of the funding went to lower Columbia cap for dispersment to folks in the situation who really it does just come down to a financial hardship. And then emergency shelter from the Emergency Support Shelter, Family Promise or Community House on Broadway if folks need a place to stay immediately.
So you mentioned utilities with the Salvation Army and churches. Lower Columbia cap works with PUD to help assist with utilities.
Correct.
Bill, electric, electricity bills.
They do, and I am not knowledgeable enough to speak on exactly what their criteria is. I know that each organization that provides aid has specific criteria. And sometimes if they don't meet the criteria of one organization, a church or Salvation Army might fit their specific situation. So that's why there's a variety. We, we do try very hard because people have opened up and we've done that listening that we've done with the intake and we've heard about each person's specific situation like I spoke about earlier. We try and really find out where to refer them so they can get help right away. When you are struggling and homelessness is knocking at your door, so to speak, it can be really daunting just to be handed a list of local resources and say, there should be someone on this list who can help you start calling phone numbers. So we do try and tailor the recommendations that we make to what we have heard them just say and point them in the right direction so they don't have to go through 25 people before they find someone who can help their specific situation.
So you mentioned the role that churches play. There's another one that is not on the list that's be pretty useful. And that's, they use the term fish, but they get food resources.
Yes.
From CAP and then distribute that again. But it's different churches, so the location changes and you have to know the schedule to, to, to make that referral a little bit more effective, but.
Yes, and that is an organization, you're right, is not on the list. That is an organization that we are familiar with and we have referred people to use their services. Thank you. Anything else on referral before we move on?
Yeah.
Okay. Arn, go for it.
Where do you send a veteran?
That's a great question.
We have, we have a couple veteran offices that we send them to. It doesn't appear that a lot of them are a great help to our veterans in need. That's what we found through experience and we've tried to find some new resources that might be more helpful because we've so much as even walked them to the, the office down the street and it hasn't been successful. So I think in that area, we're kind of lacking, but what we have learned and I can't name them off the top of my head, there are a couple of agencies that will help the veterans also, but they're not listed as a veteran resource. So we're still educating ourselves as to all the ways we can help our, our veterans and we're just learning more and more because the natural ones that are listed on our resource guide are not the ones that we usually mention to them. They've tried them and come up wanting, so.
Yeah, I've, I've heard that before, maybe offline sometime we can chat a little on that. There's something there I don't understand. Now, if I were a new person in town and I wanted to take a shower, typically in the old days, I go to the to the YMCA and I could do that. Is that not available?
There's another resource that we share with them where they can get showers and I don't remember the name, but what just came to me is the Catholic Community Services are ones that said they help veterans. And that was one we never knew about or thought about, but now we've become more familiar with them. On our resource guide, which is four pages long, we usually go down the line asking them, what services could you use? Could you use like help with paying for your laundry, to take your laundry to the laundromat? And we'll highlight that and we'll highlight something for where they can go get a shower. I think Salvation Army is one place where they can now go get a shower.
Do you meet with HHS at all for trying to find out about all the possibilities?
Well, we're communicating more with them because every month they have a, a Zoom meeting with all of, with any agencies that want to come on and we talk together like a roundtable and it's really great to share information and and network that way. So we are in communication with them a great deal.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hoping you stay in your lane and I don't mean this in a nasty way. We've got so many agencies out there that and it sounds like really you just need to know if you've come to a conclusion that your client needs, needs a shower, I guess you know where to send them, but other than that, the reconciliation is a good thing.
We remind each.
Don't think you're responsible for doing the referrals.
We have to remind each other. We're not counselors because many times we get on the phone and we feel like we lean towards that and we have to kind of cut the conversation short or otherwise we're on the phone all day.
I mean, sometimes people who have a lot of problems just want somebody to talk to.
They just need a good listening ear.
Yes.
But I think, Arn, you bring up a good point to stay in our lane and I don't take that offensively. You know, we specialize in mediation services and with mediation, people need that because they have a problem in their lives. And if you've been around long enough, you know that usually problems don't just show up by themselves. But if, you know, things are going badly for you in one area, if you've lost your job, there's a ripple effect. And I think that what we're trying to accomplish is recognizing, we are there to provide mediation and conciliation services, but it's impossible for us, I think as humans who care about our community, to really isolate and only address that one issue. And so because we hear it all, we try and help with specifically what we are trained to do and help them with the mediation and the, the housing portion of that. And make sure that they leave with something tangible for their next steps down the, down the road. We don't help people write their resumes and take them to job interviews or any of those types of things. There are so many good resources that we're still learning about. But yes, a, a part of our job is because we have heard all of this information, how do we with a good conscience make sure they have all the resources that we know are available in the community before we send them on our way? Even if mediation doesn't end up being what they need, they still usually leave with somewhere else to go and another name on the list to check off.
I'm completely in agreement with you. In fact, I typically feel we don't have enough of a holistic view of a problem. So we focus on something that's maybe just a symptom. But anyhow, I, I'm good.
Okay. These are good questions. Okay, so if we want to go to the next question, does mediation work? And yes, if we can get there is our answer. The majority of cases that you can see by the numbers, you know, going down from who comes in to who gets a conflict coaching and referral. Very few of our cases make it all the way to what we consider mediation or a formal conciliation process. And if they get there, it works. You know, out of the 13 that we can say we've worked all the way through from intake to a mediation or conciliation process, we get, you know, 12 of those folks, those pairs of landlords and tenants and their property managers have reached some kind of an agreement. Whether that's a move-out plan of, you know, I need some time to move out to save some money to get a deposit and it's working that way. It's an agreement because it avoids eviction. It avoids the costs, the courts, the, the damage to your credit, the emotional trauma, all of that. We're, that's what we're trying to avoid is people going to unlawful, unlawful detainer court if we can avoid it. So sometimes an agreement does mean a move-out, but it doesn't mean eviction. And sometimes it means they reach an agreement on a repayment plan or something along those lines. And then, you know, we have folks that get all the way down there and they still can't agree and that's okay. We can't make them.
So I'm confused. That's normal state. The universe of began. The universe of began with uh oh that was moments ago, so two hundred and some odd numbers.
Yes.
Right? And out of that, we're only talking about thirteen here. So how do we get down to thirteen?
So that's a great question. Um, so the when folks go through our program, the services by type, I think it's maybe page three or four. Conflict coaching is a hundred and fifty-five, referral, conciliation and mediation, that makes up that thirteen. So by the time people get to mediation, they may have had these other conflict coaching and referral services. A lot of times this uh conflict coaching, people are closer to a resolution than they think and that hundred and fifty-five means that they came to us, but they didn't need further services. They weren't in such a bad state that they needed mediation. So we can, you know, help them resolve their conflict before they need to get all the way through to that mediation. Sometimes it's the landlords or the property managers refuse mediation services and because it's voluntary, we can't force them to do that. So that number thirteen at the end, that is people who um need the services, meaning other remedies have not worked and they both agree uh to mediate. So it really is it's a fine filter by the time we get down to the end of it. And I do want to make a distinction. Everything that we're offering, we consider mediation services, whether or not we get to a formal sit down at a table mediation is different. I think that all of these services are geared to conflict resolution and keep keeping people housed, whether or not they need that formal mediation. I'd love that number to be higher, but sometimes people can reach their resolution before we get to the table. I don't know if that helped clarify what you're asking or not.
Did quite well.
Okay.
Thank you. I I I think the numbers were out of all your clients, mediation failed once.
Yeah, formal mediation fails once. Let's look at it that way.
But you look, but you look at of all the clients that it wasn't successful, one out of the two hundred and forty-nine cases. So
I like the way you look at that.
Getting to your 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 broader definition of mediation services, it's working on all different, all different cylinders.
Yes, yes.
Is he on your staff?
Not yet, but I hear he's retiring soon. Uh, okay, so highlights, uh we can, and then any other questions that have come up, please feel free to ask. Um, so of the a total of four hundred and forty-nine individual cases representing local households in conflict have been opened since July of twenty twenty-three. So when this program first started, July of last year, that's the total number of individual households um that we've helped. That includes that number that you just saw. Of those four hundred and forty-nine cases, only twenty-one have resulted in a confirmed termination of tenancy through eviction or voluntary tenant move out when outcomes are known. So when people go through our process and we know what happened at the end, obviously aren't going to big brother these people and follow them around, but when we know what happened at the end, only twenty-one have resulted in a confirmed termination of tenancy, which I think is a positive number. That means we're solving a lot of problems. And then of those twenty-one cases, only fifteen, or sorry, fifteen of them were agreed upon move out plans outside of the unlawful detainer pro- um process. So like I said, sometimes moving out is the option, but we're we're trying to avoid people being in in the unlawful detainer court. That is our our benchmark there. So what, if any, questions do you have? The last page is contact information and I would like to say uh not with us today because she's at the Resource Fair uh talking about this program is Lisa Gainer. She is the Housing Stability Program Lead. She's been with us for more than three years through E R P and has been with this project since day one. So any of those other specific questions you have or aren't veteran services, things like that? She's the one that really has that working wealth of knowledge. She'd be able to answer those questions far better than the two of us.
So I I have a, you know, a lot of times it takes some amount of history before you can really do thorough understanding and the valuation, but for for what we've given from the county, it seems quite a bargain. Yeah, I'd I'd agree with that. Yeah, and so.
Are you suggesting they need more money?
Well, it's it's always interesting. You you do want to you do want to uh spend money where it's effective. But money is a double-edged sword too. I've seen a lot of organizations just blow up upon growing up, if you will, or they blow up rather than grow up. So uh I'm assuming you'll be asking for some more support financially at some point.
At some point down the road right now, so we have we have fund diversification. Obviously, we get some money through the the State Department of Commerce. We have our client fees through other programs. The the money that we receive through the county, the sixty-three thousand dollars per year does not pay for everything that we need for this program. We supplement with our own funds, right? So to continue on, we we think that housing stability is a valuable, you know, thing that we can bring to the community. So we're we're always going to be involved in housing stability, whether we have direct support financially from the county or not. It's very helpful. I don't think we need any more money for this particular program. We're working very, very hard. But it's very rewarding and we're we're happy to be a part of it. So at some point down the road, if we want to grow into a new new program, we will certainly, you know, come and ask for support from the county because it is a county service. Um, it's not just Longview, not just Calso, it really is a county um resource. But no, we don't need any more money right now.
And in I don't think I've ever heard that before, but the uh the association affiliation or contact with the courts. Can you talk just a little bit about that?
Yeah, so are you are you speaking about the the other contract that we have coming from the document recording fees?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so that is a a separate program from the same center. It's, we just call it the Family Mediation Program. By and large, that is um supporting mediation services for people who are either getting a divorce or working on a parenting plan. That can be the creation of a parenting plan of, you know, two folks who are splitting for the first time and they have shared children. Um, or that can be people who are needing to modify their parenting plan. They have one that's been working, kids are older, they need to change and they're not in agreement. That's the majority of the cases that we do. So um most of our mediations are parenting plan and divorce type mediations. Um, and that's where that funding goes.
On a voluntary basis, or does the does the judge sometimes say you will talk to the mediation center?
Yes and yes. So um mediation is state statute says that mediation is voluntary, meaning we cannot compel. Even the judge cannot compel anyone to participate in mediation. They can order you to attend and that's where Callis County is mandatory mediation and that means that you have to go and attend and show up. If you choose not to participate, you can exercise that right not to speak. Majority of the times people get referred to us by the court when they're going through a process like this, they show up in mediation. We sit down, we talk for two hours. Sometimes we'll come back for another session, do four hours. So yes, it's mandatory on paper, but it's voluntary in that people have to want to talk and participate. Any other questions?
You want more?
No, you have other people that want to talk too, or we're all set. We're um we're very pleased to be a part of, you know, the working with the county and partnering with you. The financial support is always very helpful and I think we've seen a lot of positive results. We're always looking to get better and improve. But just looking back, I think we've been very helpful in the community and we have learned a lot about how we can continue to be helpful in the future. And so I'm looking forward to many more meetings like this.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for the work that you do for us.
We appreciate the the updates too. We always get those, so thank you for your time.
Thank you for the encouragement you give us.
Thanks.
Hey, the next one on the list, I don't know who's leading that. I can I can preface it, but I don't I don't know, George, who do you want to have at the table? I don't know who you want to have at the table, the Ada. Okay, so while we start to moving up here, let me preface this a little bit so to kind of explain how we got where we are because we have a juvenile facility that that when it was built, was set up to handle life over a hundred, hundred kids. I don't know the exact number. But in the past few years with law changes and and whatnot, we don't we don't handle that many kids. We have portions of the building that are unused.
You can go up there too.
We have to, anything we do with that building has to involve juveniles. So that my colleagues gave me the permission to put together a a small group and start to I I identify what could we do over there? And so we're we're at the very starting point of what really will be a long process and and the starting point was, let's take a look at the the building and can we does it have the ability to com- convert a portion of it into helping youth and in this case it would be a rehab or or mental health or whatever. And so we contracted with uh the group and they toured the building and and did some, I think what you're going to see is, to me, some magic that I I was surprised. I had, I honestly, I had my doubts that you could turn this because you have a building built for juveniles and incarceration. They would make this actually look like you could use it for something else and so I'll let you form your own opinions, but but to myself, it was uh pretty good. The small group was myself and our clerk. Uh Judge Han was part of that. Uh George Boya is part of that, Gina James, and then later towards the end of I brought in Tricia Rodman uh from a citizen standpoint and I think is if we make the decision and we continue to move forward, then uh that position will will uh have a lot more value as we move, if we make that decision. So right today, they're going to show us what they were able to do with the building, what it would kind of estimate a a cost at some point for us to do and then I guess at this point, then we'd make a decision, do we want to take further steps or or is it beyond what we we can do? That's kind of the bottom line. Did I state anything that I hadn't stated before? I I think, okay, good. You guys might introduce your, I know George is, I know, but you might introduce your others. Make sure the, is the green light?
Alan's on.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes, my name's Dom Luthard. I'm a principal at Ada Architects. We're located in uh Van- in um Longview and in Battleground. And with me today is uh John Yun, who was pretty much the project manager running this this survey and study with us. And then uh Ryan Wing, who's another principal from our firm, who's has extensive experience in residential treatment facilities as well. I'd like to turn it over to to John, maybe kind of walk us through the the steps that we took. Thank you for letting us be here today.
And if I might say, these microphones are more useful if you're closer to them. And yeah.
And if you turn them on, I heard.
All right, so uh we'll just go through this quick slide packages that we put together. It's just a comprehensive overview of some of the uh the context and scope of what we looked at for this feasibility study. If you go to slide number two. So this one kind of shows you the context of where the study took place. We're looking at here the the Callis County Juvenile Court. And from there is an entrance uh access to the parking lot um off of First Avenue and our proposal, uh we looked at two options. They both uh involve an access point starting from the parking lot, a separate sidewalk and entrance into kind of the southeast um corner of the of the gym of the residential uh component of the corrections, currently corrections uh housing. If you go to the next slide, please. So this here is a plan of the existing uh facilities and what we looked at, if you look on the, I guess, the right side, it's four, four quadrants of um of uh housing currently. Um, and we're looking at option A of combining the the bottom two uh as highlighted in the blue dashed uh highlight. And option B looks at combining the uh the eastern two pods and uh and the gym that's on the south side as shown in the yellow dash highlight.
Uh question. How did you decide on two rather than three or even one?
So that was one of the uh assumptions that we took and that was in a stakeholder meeting was shared that hey, we currently operate two, two pods. And occasionally if there's a need for separation with uh whether uh because of gender or uh different, different groups, they they have a need for an additional office uh spot, but for now, for the purposes of this study, because two of the pods are largely unoccupied, let's look at converting two of the uh pods, combining two of the pods into a residential treatment center.
Okay, yeah, purpose of my question is to figure out if you were driven by some mechanical requirement of separation or something like that, or was it just said, well, let's try that and see how that, how that fits?
I don't think it was necessarily that it was just a underutilized space of the current facilities. It was not being used, so can we look at using that space for a residential treatment center?
We knew they had to, juvenile had to have two pods because they had to have separate by gender, so we knew they had to have two. And the configuration of option A or option B really revolved around the the gym.
Yeah, so the the kind of thing I was looking for, the underlying assumptions and is you're going to keep the integrity of a pod.
Right.
Somehow. And so that immediately will push you into two. Okay.
Oh, and uh each of the pods currently are um they're isolated from the other pods and that's kind of a kind of also a driving factor in utilizing an entire pod instead of, let's say, one and a half or or so uh. There's two pods that share.
Judge Hung uh was concerned, I think, made it pretty clear that these would have to be isolated, not have interaction with the juvenile part of it.
Yeah, the the I'm sure later on it'd be a consideration. Each pod is sixteen units, as I remember, and I don't know that we've ever had in recent times, I don't think we've ever had anywhere near sixteen. So uh because of the boy-girl kind of thing, you end up having to tear into the pod, but that then is a different price tag and so I am. Okay.
Right, and I think there was also the desire to separate if there's any different gangs and separate people that way as well.
Right.
If we go to the next slide, please. This is our uh option A, level one, and um what we looked at in uh, it's not in this slide that, but we have a uh spreadsheet of all the different spaces that were minimally required for uh the state's Department of Health licensing requirements. So that was kind of the basis of design and and space planning and if in the future, uh if we, if there are additional requirements by the insurance carrier or service provider, this would need to be revised or looked at again. Um, but for the purposes of this study, we just went off of the uh State of Washington's Department of Health requirements for for licensing. Uh so option one or option A, we look at dividing uh the residential components to two separate wings, the left and right. The left and right, the central, uh, central space, which used to be an office and treatment rooms. There and, and a gym that's kind of reallocated and, and subdivided into support spaces. And as you can see from the, the red arrows, it's kind of how the circulation as you come in from the lower, lower left. Kind of divides up and there's a relatively linear path to accessing the two separate pods. The blue arrow you see at the top, that's kind of back of house access, um, connecting back to the current facilities, existing facilities. And their intake and laundry service, that's kind of, uh. Being current, uh, utilized currently for, for the, uh, for the other two pods. Uh, the next slide shows level two, so you off the entry lobby and the reception area. It'd be an introduction of a new staircase and the level two. Um, you see all the, in all the purple spa, uh, boxes, these are areas that would be allocated for admin spaces. Uh, such as the medical provider or a therapist's office, clinical director and such. Um, the, kind of the pros of this option is that it separates your admin space and your residential space. Into levels, so there's very low risk of intermingling there and, um, and then also additional. Separation between the two residential wings. For the second.
Question, uh, the, the, this is the level that now if I walk into a pod, I, I look up and I see all the cages, if you will.
Correct.
So you would, you would redo all the cages into this.
Correct.
Structure.
The mezzanine level would be, uh. Uh, what you see as a boundary, that's currently the edge of the current mezzanine. And so, uh, there wouldn't, um, in this, at this stage, to keep costs kind of at a minimum, we're not. Ex, uh, proposing to expand the mezzanine level or anything like that. So that was option one. And if we look at option B. Slide number six. So this one looks at combining the, uh, the eastern two. Two pods here. And as you can see in the yellow, your, your housing units, the residents are on the perimeter. Uh, we've combined two of the current cells into a single bedroom for, um, for a larger sleeping, uh, sleeping area. Uh, and because we, uh, had to eliminate. The corridor that exits to the, to the right side of the sheet, we created as an additional corridor, path of egress. Um, but the advantage of this option is that your nursing station, your nurse station in green is kind of consolidated. So that, uh, reduces, I guess, the number of personnel that would have to monitor, uh, the two different spaces. And then, uh, your brown or your service support spaces, that's kind of underneath. The current, uh, electrical space that's on the second level. So that's, that retains. Um, unfortunately with this one, you'll see that there's a lot more elbows in the red arrows. So blind corners and, and a little bit more, uh. Inefficient use of space for circulation.
Take a little license here, the chairman can, he's got a, he's got a big gavel there. The ironic thing is that I made it, so he'll probably use it on me. Just not to get mired in the details, but. What is the fundamental difference between A and B from an operational standpoint? So, you know, I, I understand the location and all that kind of stuff, but, but that's not too consequential to us at this point.
I think operationally, they relatively, that's, I think it's similar. Uh, the only reason we looked at the two different options were, um, to see how it would affect current operations. If we were to take, uh, the pods at the, at the end of the building versus separating this corridor that runs over, uh. On the center, center of, um.
I think I understand that, but, uh, the board probably doesn't really know too much of what that operational flow. Is, that would be George. So I would rely completely on George saying this works and this, this works, but not as well. So, uh. Okay.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, George Moya, Juvenile Court Administrator. Uh, to your question, Commissioner, yes, it, it has mostly to do with operations. And if you're looking at Plan A, that would mean that our pods are divided by a recreational area and a classroom area. So from the flow of business and operations, it flows well. Um, the one thing that we would be concerned is if we're creating blind spots. If we're creating cross traffic with juveniles. So all those tend to lead to increased probability of incidents. Um, or other, other issues that may arise from that. So when you're looking at it, it's just really from a flow perspective. And again, just to limit the, the probability of incidents happening.
And you, you've been with the, with the development up to this point, you've been.
Since, since the start, yes.
So, uh, did you learn anything between A and B? Like, do you have a preference and?
I do. I prefer A over B, um, mainly for, for the, the main reasons that I said, you know, you, you limit the blind spots. You, you, um, limit cross traffic.
The only reason we consider B then is because it's significantly more cost effective for construction or something like that.
I, I, I'm not sure in regards to the cost and the difference between A and B, if there's any cost difference, that I'm not sure.
Yeah, right. So, so I'm really asking, what's the driver that causes us to think that we need to consider A and B? Rather than just, hey, here's A, does it work, work for us?
So the, excuse me, so for the, um. For the purposes of the feasibility study, I think that was, that was the, um, reason why we looked at. We weren't sure what one, one option had advantages over the other. And in order to determine that, uh, we looked at implementing the minimum required spaces into the given footprint. With and, and the impacts that it has to the current operations.
Excellent answer. Okay, yeah.
Thank you. And, uh, you know, I, I would say that I also fa- favor A. And one of the reasons by that, if, if it worked and, and things grew, if you, if you recognized the building. From those two facing out, there's room for expansion for office or something. Out that front, easier than I think the other way.
Okay, and there's an issue always with situations, uh, the safety of the staff. Exit from the second floor, that's all been taken into account and thought about.
Yes, those are, uh, safety and, um. Uh, separation of, of staff and, and, uh, the, the residents, those were factors taken into account. And reported in the feasibility report, I think, um. If, if desired, I believe Kelly can send a link to, to that file.
Option A serves as a greater capacity though, doesn't it?
As far as capacity, the bed count, option B, there was one more, uh, twenty-five. And option A had twenty-four beds. And, um, as alluded to before, if in the future, the insurance carrier or other providers require, have more requirements. Such as they need an inclusion of an isolation room or something like that, that would have to come out of one of the bedrooms. So that's another, uh, in, in the future phase, I think we would have to. Reevaluate some of these spaces, but for now, I think, uh, what we did shows or meets the current requirements for licensing, state licensing. The final slide here is just the level two of option B. And, um, unlike the first option, we retain the second level of one of the residential pods. And, um, and then all the, uh, uh, admin spaces go on the second floor of. Of the lower pod there. So there's, there isn't an extended, uh, admin wing, but that's. I guess both depending on, on how it's used and who is using it, the additional spaces on the upper right. Uh, can be both a strength or a drawback.
So, so I noticed a second set of stairs, there's no, the two levels aren't connected. At upstairs, you have to go downstairs to get to one side.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Currently that gray area in between the two pods is a mechanical space.
Yeah. So you talk about a lot more places to hide, a lot more, um. Hidden corners, particularly on the first floor and for the, the, the option B.
That kind of brings us to our final slide. Which we looked at and, um, just a very rough order magnitude of, uh. A cost opinion based on a square, just assigning a, a dollar number to the square foot of, uh, the different spaces. And option B, actually, because there's more space, more square footage needed for renovation. It comes out a little bit higher at eight point four and option A is eight point two million.
Not inexpensive.
Not inexpensive, and, uh, and at these numbers, I think we were also looking at. It's very similar to what you'd be looking at if you were to construct a new facility, just, uh. Adjacent to this building and that, and that, um, if you look on slide two. There's a patch of field in between the county jail. And the juvenile court. So even if you were to construct a separate building or separate structure there. We're looking at similar, if not, uh, comparable.
And, uh, what? My hearing aids in the phone, I'm new hearing aids, I'm still, uh. ADA.
ADA, uh, compliance has been looked at.
For the staff on the second floor, uh, no elevator.
In this version, it was not required just because of the amount of square footage required in the mezzanine. Um, if we were to look at expanding that or increasing the need, I think then we would need to install one.
I don't know if that's a problem or not, so I'm, and I'm just a troublemaker here right now. Uh, George, is that going to be a problem?
You know.
It's up to you now, right?
I'm sorry.
It's not a problem for your operations now.
It's not a problem for our operations, but, um, because we have room and capacity downstairs. So we're not really in full operation mode upstairs, nor do we have staff that may be on limitations. If they are in limitations, then we have different positions where not, they're not with youth or they're not having to, um, respond to a code. But yes, that, that's an excellent question. The assumption here is that even a clinical supervisor or a nurse or whoever may be occupying that office. The assumption is that they don't need any ADA accommodation. And so that, that's an excellent point.
So, I, I'm, I'm curious about you saying that. To build a separate facility from scratch would cost about the same. Although it would probably have an elevator. So it's like. You're having to deal with existing limitations of the building. Uh, a, a new facility for the same amount of money would probably be a better, more secure design.
That sounds, sounds like an accurate assessment. And the reason for the cost is currently the facilities are designed for, uh, a higher level, level of security. So it's grouted, um, concrete masonry. And in order to demolish some of that, to combine spaces or reallocate, um, some of the, the rooms for. Uh, to, or to subdivide into the spaces required to smaller spaces. The amount of renovation that would be needed is, is extensive and, and, uh, almost irreversible. If the space was, uh, the need for increased corrections need came up, you know, many years down the road. And so in order to make that kind of a renovation, it. It would be a, uh, be a lot higher than if you were to create or construct something similar of, of function for, with less security.
Then we have another building to maintain. If we were to do that as a separate building would. Would the location then be on the table? Does it have to be there?
Doesn't have to be there.
Okay.
Then location be on the table, yes.
Yeah, okay. And then, uh, George, all other things being equal, you'd rather leave things alone and have a new building? Or not mess up your building?
No, I, I'm, I'm for whatever makes sense, the most sense for what we have. Um, but I know that the group has discussed in detail the concerns, the pros, the cons. And one thing that, that stands to me, and it keeps coming over and over. And, and John alluded to that, what if we had to undo certain things?
Yeah.
Then that would be an additional cost. Um, if laws change, I, we know that from the criminal justice world, the pendulum is swinging. Back where there's more accountability required. They think the public is really wanting that and. And we're going to see an uptick in youth coming into detention. I'm not saying that's going to be a hundred percent of our business, I'm just saying there's an uptick. Uh, there's bus, um, there's legislature that's happening. Um, and so we don't know, there's a lot of unknowns. Um, but in looking at all this and looking at the costs. And if we have the, um, the same amount for a newer building. Designed specifically for that specific need, then it makes sense. The other assumption that I keep going back is that we can do all these renovations. To our detention facility, which is pretty much almost brick and mortar, which is cement and cinder blocks. It's fortified, so it, it costs a lot of money to change that. Um, but as you all know, you've visited our detention facility, the roof is not in the best shape. So you're adding different architectural components, newer components to an aging roof. To an aging building that has other needs. So I, and looking at all those things, I have to say, what makes the most sense for the price? And, and.
Have we learned anything about, uh, the, the picture I'm having is it looks like. We are going to have to consider an independent building. If the price is the same, then we. We still face, uh, the issue of a lot of unused capacity. And our adult jail was built for a time when we didn't have the view of pandemics or all that other stuff. Did we learn anything here that says we could convert that a little bit and give some of that space over to adult detention?
All's I can. You know, I don't know if that'd be a possibility or not. If, if, if I rely on the judges, it's an absolute no.
But that doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, I.
I, I think one of the, one of the. Legal barriers for making, bringing adults into the juvenile facility. Is the, they, they call it the Pria, but it's making sure adult prisoners stay a long ways away from youth. Just don't want them that close.
Yes, it's RCW, it's separation of sight and sound as, as it's stated on the RCW. So that's the big hurdle that you have to go through.
I, I, I think I know that, but, uh, in, in this analysis, you had to essentially isolate the detention facilities anyhow. So I'm saying, uh, maybe you say it, it will, uh, increase the cost by. uh, maybe you say it, it will, uh, increase the cost by a million, million dollars, another ten, fifteen percent. Um, but at least it gives us something to think about. Uh, having those individuals' cells is something we sorely needed, uh, during the, during the COVID era and, uh, letting people out of jail because we didn't have the jail space, just didn't do us a good turnout in the street.
And, and I'm, I'm thinking off the cuff here, cause you, you, you mentioned something that, that kind of struck to me. They say, well, could there be more use for the jail? Uh, and if we're talking about maybe not inmates, maybe a, a dual training facility for officers? Where we also get to, um, benefit from having trained staff and bet- making better use that both the jail and the juvenile can, can facility and work together on. You know, I'm, again, I'm just thinking off the cuff here, not necessarily inmates, not necessarily.
Yeah, no, I'm thinking inmates, but I think the big problem that I, at least it seems to me, the bigger problem is we've got the adult CEOs on one building and then somehow we've got to get another adult CEO staffing at the other building. Now that starts to sound continual, long-term expense. It's not just the fixing of the building, it's now we gotta duplicate staff in some way. Um, I think that's probably the killer that says, eh, that ain't gonna work too well.
Whichever w- way, if we decide to move forward, it's, it's still a long process. If you wanted to move forward with this facility, I'm sure you'd have to get state permission to convert part of it. You'd have to find the, the funding, cause you don't have a money tree out there. I mean, you had to find a provider and any changes a provider might want. So I, I mean, it's, it's still, still, still a path.
Yeah, but that's in your district.
Well. So I don't know what you gentlemen want to do, if you want to mull it over a little bit and kind of, I, I think I've taken it to the point where I, I promise you, we, we give you, uh, presentation as best, best we could, but, uh, to take it farther than I think we need to be, have some consistence, senses of what we want to do.
Uh, so what, what would be the next step or what's on the table right now for us to decide is the next step?
Well, you don't, uh, if you wanted to make a decision today, I think the, the next step is do we, we start looking further on saying, okay, we want to convert part of this. Now we're gonna have to start dealing with the state on, can we even get permission to do it and start looking for some funding and start looking for a provider. Or if you say, let's leave that how it is and, and maybe if it's, if we're comfortable, we can find money for a new facility, then we not, need to start looking for space and how that would develop.
Now, the, the dollars would come, eh, eh, if I heard correctly, the dollars are about the same.
Dollar's about the same.
Right, so.
But we'd have to get help from out, outside. You, we'd have to get some, uh, because it's adolescent facility, you may be able to get, there may be state programs that, that help that. I think in adolescent facilities, we have the ability to partner with, uh, the tribes or, or, or different folks and do some of that.
That's true for either approach.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
So, so one of the, um, other options that is out there in terms of, uh, our own building needs is that we have a facility that is in pretty rough shape. It was purchased when the plan was, uh, drug court will be at there temporarily, but it's in very le- bad shape. That's the site that I would think might be a better designed facility that, that is safer, more secure and more, more effective. You just plan to just tear that building down. Uh, drug court has to go someplace and I'm not, that's not part of the solution right now, but, um, you know, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to pay, pour that much money into a facility that's got a lot of problems right off the bat, just because of the structure. I, I, you know, if, if the state is willing to give us the money, let's build facility the right way, rather than adapting into an older building. Because I guarantee you, if you're talking roof and HVACs, you're talking a lot more money, yeah, um, rather than less, so.
Yeah.
Uh, right. So right now, I, I guess I would say, uh, back to the drawing table.
Yeah, and I know, I don't just.
And it's frustrating because, because, you know, that's, we need to be using that facility in a more efficient manner. But this may not be the right, right next year.
Then maybe we could make that be a commissioner's retirement home.
Possibility, possibility.
Only if they.
Only, only.
Only if we pad the rooms really well.
Only if the commissioners are single.
No, it's, we'll, well, nevermind.
Big hammer yet.
I, I think we need to continue your investigation. Uh, we, we went to here because we know we have a problem. And we really want to address the youth condition, and that's been a focus we've all dated before. So, uh,
Do you want us to take a look at the, what do they call that? The old, where the?
Courthouse Square?
Courthouse Square, cause that thing is, is horrid. I mean, we could, um, we could work with this group and probably come up with some kind of design that you could take a look at.
That might be, I mean, I'm okay with doing that, but then.
Yeah.
It's what, you, you need, you need to be comfortable with, to be honest, I mean.
Uh, I just know we're, you know, when I asked, we sit down one time and I sit down with George and another group and, and it was basically because we always know we have the space and what can we use it for? And we talked about OPD, we talked about this, we talked about that. And we always run into problems. So I said to George, what is even the need out there? And, and what came back was, uh, rehab for adolescents, we sent, we ship them out of county.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's two places in the state, rehab for mental health, there's one place in the state or they go to Utah. And I don't know how you help a kid when they're not but with their parents and some kind of support. So we thought if we can find a facility, and this was our first look for something local for Cal's kind of keep those youth here and do that, then it would be a benefit to our, our community. So that's what kind of, kind of drove it.
Uh, I'm, I'm trying to remember the cost, the Columbia wellness or the price Columbia wellness paid for the refurbishing of that building they bought on fourteenth down close to Tennant Way. And I know I was flabbergasted. Of course, they spent half a million on their offices on the second floor, but, uh, so I think there might be, it sounds like Tricia's saying, yeah, you're on the right track.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm gonna have to leave for another meeting, but I'd like to hear what you have to say, Tricia.
Oh.
You need to be to a mic, microphone.
Need to have you come.
People online.
People are listening and they can't hear you.
Okay, now what did I all just say? I, um, I just think so, Trish Rodman, Longview, that we really need to, um, go back to the drawing board and we really need to ask the questions, um, on whether a tw- a twelve-bed facility is even financially sustainable. I don't know a provider, you know, that would want to come in and, and.
They had twenty-four.
I thought it was.
It was designed, cause they had some upstairs.
Oh, you had it upstairs too?
Twenty-four for Plan A and twenty-five for Plan B, is that correct, John?
Are we doubling up? But no, we're not doubling, we are doubling up in rooms. Okay. So, um, and you also need to look at the reimbursement. You need to look at if you want a secure facility versus a non-secure. So Columbia Wellness, their withdrawal management and crisis stabilization unit is not secure. So that's why you can't just drop people off and hold them against their will. You, a secure facility brings in more money. I was just looking at the Medicaid rates. So if you have a youth withdrawal management, if that's what we were going to do, it's like three hundred and some dollars per day. If you'd secure it's seven hundred and eighty-three dollars. So I, and again, you know, you need a med room with an automatic uh, dispensing machine, I forget what it's called, that has a separate license, but that's where all your medications stored. So is that, would that be downstairs or upstairs? If it's upstairs, then you're having staff walk down to give meds and there's, while this is just the minimum requirements for a residential treatment facility, commercial insurance has a much higher standard than Medicaid does. And, um, we just really need to think about all those things.
Yeah, if I could summarize what you said is start from scratch and find yourself a service provider that understands all these things.
Yes, and you can even meet with the insurance companies and they can come in, they can provide and say what their requirements are. We know what the state's requirement is, but, um, I mean, it's, we want to serve all people, right? All youth or, I mean, maybe if we built a new facility, it could be half and half because the need is there, but we also need data. We need data that says, tells us how many kids we're sending out and where we're sending them, that is available. Um, and, yeah, anyway, there's.
So if you want me to continue on, I'm happy to do that. We can start looking at other, other options.
I agree with everything Trish said. And that leads me to think we, we don't mess around with the facility we have now. But then it's a whole new ballpark there. We're building essentially a, a, a small hospital.
Yeah.
And I, I know we don't have that expertise in the count, in, in the county staff. Do we want to go there is probably the big question.
Yeah.
Um, I would guess we need to chew on this a little bit.
It, it would seem to me that it, this is not a building or facility that the county would run. We would have to have the, a provider.
Yeah.
And we would need to consult with a provider to make sure it's built right. We have, maybe we have the property and, and maybe we can sponsor the construction, but it's like, no, it's gotta be designed and, and it's gotta be self-funded. Um, the state probably has money to build facilities, but it's got to pencil out staffing-wise, cause we know what happens with the state. Uh, doesn't have appropriate funding. They crowd people together and it's not a good situation. And then they try to stop admitting people and that even gets worse. And we've already gone, done, had that problem with some of the youth. Uh, it's not treatment facilities, but the youth, uh, to step up from our, our juvenile facility. So I'm not opposed to looking at, I think that's good for the community. But, uh, probably not rehabbing the juvenile center.
Right.
Yeah.
And I, I think I should probably, unless somebody thinks otherwise, uh, contact the BHO and ASO and they probably have the insight into the operational aspects. And my guess is certainly the BHO would say, excellent idea, here, allow me to help you. That's my guess.
Yeah. Well, we have a core group together and we can certainly bring them in if you, if, if you want us to take a look at that and bring it back to you.
Again, please.
Uh, we certainly with our core group can bring those in and we can look at those things and more than happy to bring it back to you and kind of give you some ideas what, what we think.
Do that.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll do that.
Thank you.
We're probably not be done with you, but we appreciate your help.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Dennis, aren't our decisions supposed to be easier as we get closer to the timeline?
Well, yeah. Health and service is a program that I said no to. That's progress.
That's true.
Okay, without anything else, I know you have a deal, we will adjourn.
Adjourned.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And, uh, I'll see you guys in a couple of weeks.